This time I'd like to call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have a full agenda before us. I'd like to make several modifications to that agenda. Agenda item number fourteen, we will remove from the agenda this evening. Okay, now can we hear? Okay, so I'll back up. First off, welcome everyone here this evening. The, I'm gonna make a number of modifications to the agenda. Agenda item number fourteen, we will remove from the agenda. Agenda item number nineteen will be removed from the agenda. And agenda item number twenty, and I know there's a lot of people that are here for that specific item, I want to move that up on the agenda directly after the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. So, does that meet with the approval of the council?
Yes.
So operate under that agenda. The first item then would be, consider then the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on March 26, 2019. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting? And that motion does pass. So, now we will move to agenda item number twenty. So, the, this is a request of Carr Family Limited Partnership, 405 Country Club Drive. Just a couple, couple of minutes ago, Mr. Carr, who is here, indicated that Carr Family Limited Partnership wishes to withdraw that request. Is that correct, James? Anything else that you want to add?
We have a city council withdrawal letter.
So if you want to just say that into the microphone.
I'd just like to give the city council the withdrawal letter. It explains the reasons.
Okay, very good. Thank you, James. So with that action, then, the request for the conditional use permit, 405 Country Club Drive, is withdrawn.
Questions?
Comments?
Greg, go ahead.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and rallying against a business and a sale of a property that we've received a number of comments and questions over my four-plus years here about why can't we fill these buildings? I'd like to give you an example of why. So, hope everybody's happy with the outcome.
I'm happy with the outcome because I, well, I am, because I think what was being proposed is illegal. I think it violates the city ordinance, and we have, the city of Marshall has to follow the law, just like everyone else. No one's above the law, not the president, not the governor, not the city council. And it's, in my interpretation, the law and the ordinance is that manufacturing, processing is only allowed in an I-2 general industrial district, and it's not allowed in a B-3 business district. And so I think the decision that was made is the right decision, and I applaud the people out there for standing up for your rights, because you need to do that sometime. You need to let the city know what's going on and what your feelings are. And you participated. You came to the public hearing, and you're here tonight. That's what good citizens do. You come out and you protect not only your rights, but those of your neighbors too. And you make sure that things are done fair and legally. And I applaud you for your actions and your participation, and I really appreciate you sending letters to the city council and coming here tonight. We need to hear from you.
And I'd like to go on to say that that's your opinion, that it's correct, and we also have opinions from established attorneys with established experience and staff that say something to the contrary. Plus, we have a history on that property of very similar functions taking place, and that is also part of the code. So it is a good conversation. I appreciate the people being involved, but I really hope, I let you finish, let me finish. So I really hope that people think about that when you go, and when you react, make sure you have all the information and understand the consequences. There were a lot of things that were brought up that I believe are true concerns, and there were a lot of other things that were brought up that I don't think were true concerns. And I think it was things that were gone with very little, if any, information and background, and it was a lot of emotion, and I think that's really too bad.
I would like to address your concerns. First of all, I am an attorney, and it is my interpretation of the law that this was be illegal if we approved it. But not only is it my opinion, but there's an attorney from the Twin Cities that gave us an opinion that same as mine. So I'm not the only attorney that feels it would be an illegal act. So, we have a former business, or a former building official, who also thinks it's a violation of the city code, the city ordinance. So it's not just my opinion. There are other experts out there that also agree that this would be an illegal act on the part of the city.
And those, and those two opposing views are exactly why things go to litigation, and there are opposing views, and that's how that's.
I will recognize Councilmember Lozinski.
You know, on that note, there was a lot of letters sent, but there's a large support for this business in the business community. I probably had more people who contacted me who supported it, but they were afraid to say anything because of the mob mentality that happened at planning and zoning and the letters we got. When we're attacking employees of this gentleman that live in New Hampshire, that's stepping over the line. And, and I do look at this, this is a loss of thirty jobs. This is a loss of a large revenue source for the city of Marshall. It also opens up lawsuits against us for property values of big box stores, because we're unwilling to sell them. So when your loving increases next year, six, eight, ten percent, because we got nailed by Walmart, Menards, Runnings, Shopko on their big box stores, that's part of it. We neglected to sell one, and they will use that in tax court.
I'd like to ask a question.
Could I just respond one more thing to that? I don't think, I don't like referring to concerned citizens as mobs. There may be people that said things out of line, and I don't defend that, but generally, I think the people here were concerned, they expressed those concerns, and they have the right to express those concerns. And I don't think we, think we as city councils should be scaring them and talking about increasing their taxes and so forth. Everyone here is in favor of economic development, but we want it done in a fair and a legal manner. And again, the city council's not above the law. We, we need to obey the law, just like you do out there. And, and I, I think, certainly there are always instances of people that step over the line when they believe in something strongly, and I'm not defending their actions, again. But there are a lot of concerned citizens out there that did the right thing, that did their research, looked up the ordinances, and contacted us in good faith, and overall, I was impressed with the way the letters were. If, if, there was a letter against me on there that was, had derogatory statements about me and what I did at the planning commission meeting, and, I mean, it happens both ways. It's not just a one-way street here. And, and like I say, I applaud your actions. I think you needed to be concerned, because government doesn't always make the best decisions or the right decisions. And you have to watch, you have to be a watchdog in what happens. And if you think something's wrong, you should work to correct it. And I think that's what you've done, and again, I applaud you for your actions.
So we can have discussion on this, but the reality is, is that the reason this came before the council is that there was a request for a use, and that request has been withdrawn, so we truly have no agenda item and no, we can bring up open discussion in the later part of the agenda when we have open council member items, but there is not, this isn't the forum, because we don't have an agenda item. So with that, I'm gonna move then to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing on the Anderson addition, the preliminary hearing on the preliminary plot. I will call on Director of Public Works, City Engineer Glenn Olson, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This preliminary plot includes a piece of property located at the intersection of Channel Parkway and West Main Street. The current owners, Doug and Peggy Anderson, have purchased adjacent lots next to their current operation, and because those properties were meets and bounds, they had different subdivisions within this area, it was decided the best thing to do for the property was to replat it into one parcel. That doesn't mean that in the future it couldn't be re-subdivided, but it can be, can be done a lot easier when it's one single lot ownership. So that's the issue. We did present the preliminary plot to the utility companies for their review, had their input, established utility easements around the perimeter of the lot, and we would recommend approval of the preliminary plot.
We'll open up as, for public comment, either from the audience or from the council as part of the public hearing. Any input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Well, I'll consider the approval of the preliminary plot. Any questions on this?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. And the next agenda item then would be to consider the final plot. Glenn, any comments on the final plot?
Just one thing, I would like the motion to approve contingent upon the attorney's review of title opinion and approval.
Okay. With that, Russ.
Make a motion with the.
I think Russ has a question.
Question, Glenn. On, on that page, it said, and I didn't see it on the first, an additional utility easement has been placed along West Main Street. Can you point that out?
There would be an additional easement placed along this line.
Okay, all right. I just wasn't sure where that was.
Any other questions? John.
Okay, make a motion to approve this with the changes recommended by engineering that are for legal approval.
Second.
And Mr. Anderson hasn't met, he has dropped off a number of papers regarding the.
So that motion was by John, seconded by Jim. Now discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. So we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. Agenda item number six is a public hearing on 305 Brussels Court. This is a public hearing regarding home property tax abatement request. Sharon, do you have this?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we'll have the city clerk present the background information on these two tax abatement requests.
So introducing Kyle Box, Marshall City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have two public hearings, back-to-back, regarding property tax abatements. These are number, are request number two and three that we have received since starting this, this policy, this program in the city of Marshall. Two weeks ago, the city council did call for a public hearing at the March 26 meeting that is now being held tonight. Per Minnesota State statute, the governing body of the political subdivision must hold a public hearing before adopting the resolution. These properties are being constructed right now under a management company, so that's why you're seeing the non-Homestead tax rate and the Homestead tax rate. The city assessor is also here this evening if you have any questions regarding those tax rates.
Thank you, Kyle. We'll open up as far as a public hearing and public comment on the 305 Brussels Court request. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that would, has any statements or questions as part of the public hearing?
You indicated that it's non-Homestead, possibly, and it's being held by a certain company now. Is there any idea when the property's gonna be sold? I mean, if it, if it's held for them for a number of years, do they get the reduced
So Dave Parsons, city assessor, will address that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To answer that question, Glenn, the, the policy's kind of designed to maybe capture that. You know, it is a developer that's building the residential homes in intent to, to sell them, so once upon completion, they'll hit the market. And the policy's designed to not take effect into two assessment years after the application's filed, only to give them time to sell it, and also gives time for it to catch up to a hundred percent of the value. We always have that year lag, so.
I realize that two-year period that's built in there, which is good.
So if there's some unforeseen reason, they don't sell, they would still receive the abatement if approved. It would just be that rate you see there is different, which would change the amount of the abatement.
And the abatement would go to a developer, not an owner, then?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Are there any questions about that resolution? Now, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
This is, when we made that policy, it was to stimulate housing development, and the reason the two-year delay on it was, like Dave said, is to catch up and let the property come to full valuation. Most developers aren't gonna want to keep that house for two years. They're gonna want to turn that thing pretty quick. So hopefully, this does what it's supposed to do, and gets more people buying houses that are affordable, or we can move them into Marshall.
Well, and these two are examples of that, so.
Right.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion does pass. Agenda item number eight is a public hearing on home property tax abatement request. This location is 307 Brussels Court. Same information that Kyle had provided before. You have nothing else. So we'll open up as public comment, either from the council or from members of the audience on this request for this hearing.
Mayor, may, who is the developer and where is the property located?
So Glenn, if you'd want to describe the, the location.
Yes, it's in Parkway Two, between Channel Parkway and London Road, and I believe the south side of Madrid.
And Kyle, I'll ask you to, the, and the application is the developer, developer name?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The application is in there. The developer is J.M. Management.
If, in case you didn't hear, J.M. Management.
Do we know who the principal is, is in that?
Well, that's their, just the name of the, of the group, as far as who the investors are, that's not part of the application. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. Agenda item number nine then is a resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion does pass. Move then to the consent agenda, bringing the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. So they include the resolution authorizing, authorizing the transfer of funds from 495 to Fund 602, consider the approval of the fire township agreements, consider declaring surplus property from building maintenance, consider the amendments to the fund balance policy, oh, that one's, that one was pulled. Consider the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from Fund 101 to Fund 495. Consider the approval of the off-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor license and the tobacco license for I-Mart LLC, location 304 East College Drive, Marshall. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda, any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion does pass. So move then to agenda item number eighteen. This is the request for a variance adjustment permit by L-2A LLC. That location would be 501 Village Drive. So with us tonight to address this or present this is Elya Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for variance to. Let me orient you first. This is Village Drive, and this is the apartment complex here. So this is a request by the owner, L-2, L-2A, to reduce the backyard for the new apartment building that they want to build here. As you can see, the site is pretty tight, and there's not much room to build a new apartment building. If you go by the ordinance, the required rear yard is based on the depth of the lot, and must be twenty-five percent of the depth of the lot, which in this case will come to about a hundred feet. And it doesn't allow building another building here. So the request is, is to reduce it to thirty feet. If you go down, then there is another apartment complex south of that thing, and the existing apartment building there already has a rear yard of ten feet, plus the property across the rear property line is a cemetery. So this request seems reasonable, and the recommendation is to approve the variance request.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions the council has on this request?
John, the, what would be the parking situation then? Have there adequate parking space?
Yes, from the site plan, preliminary site plan presented to us, it looks like there will be enough parking.
I'll tell you, just a question. Do we have any kind of a requirement up the backside towards the cemetery? I mean, do they have to have a fence or anything like that? I know there's a little wire fence there now. Is there any kind of a requirement that they're gonna put, or they're gonna?
Are you talking about specific requirements added to this variance?
Yes, or have they gave you any indication that they're gonna build a fence or anything?
No, they have not.
Because there's no fences in any of the other buildings along there. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, I believe, yeah.
So I was actually on the council or mayor when the previous request was granted, and since that time, the, there has been no, no issues, no complaints that I'm aware of. Are you?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I think the only problem area, I think, has been the driveway, and I think that was brought up last year, and I think, from what I understanding and talking with the building official, I think they were gonna address that when they're gonna build this new property.
Correct, yes, yes.
Any other questions for Elya?
The variance is for the west side then, that goes towards the cemetery?
Correct, yes.
It's not to the north?
No.
This is, okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have the request. What are the wishes of the council?
Motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elya. Moving then to agenda item number twenty-one, this is a, the resolution that would amend Resolution 4430, second series, in support of the chloride reduction water discharge into the Redwood River. With us tonight is Brad Rose, General Manager of Marshall Utilities, and who has also been kind of the, one of the chief individuals that's been working on this chloride reduction project. So with that, Brad?
Mayor, council people, esteemed staff members, the first time we talked about the idea of making our water softer, so the amount of salt going into the Redwood River could be reduced, was the year 2013. Six years later, we have been before the council, I think the last time was in the latter part of the year seventeen, where Resolution 4430 was adopted. The strength of that resolution, we proceeded to actually do the design of the improvement at the water treatment plant, and we were prepared to go to bid a year ago, when we were told by the Public Facilities Authority, a state agency that was managing and still manages the grant program that we were applying for, told us not to go to bid because the PSIG, Point Source Implementation Grant funding that the legislature provided had been funded from a source that raised the ire of a group of, of our Minnesota community, and the legislature had to go back this session and change the funding source. So it was gonna be funded from the Environmental Trust Fund, and now it's gonna be funded like it normally is, from the state's general fund. With the strength of that action taken early in the session, they told us to proceed and take the bids, and we are now approaching the time when we'll be taking the bids, currently estimated to be June 11. But because the time has passed, the estimate has gone up, and we're back before the council, like I think you wanted us to be, if the number was gonna go up, to talk again about this. We have been talking with your management staff, both Sharon's offices and Glenn's offices, with Bob, about how to divvy this up. I think there's a spreadsheet, Kyle, if I could ask you to turn to that. And if you could flip-flop that, thank you. All of these numbers are pre-bidding, obviously, but the last time we were here was actually pre- All of these numbers are pre-bidding, obviously, but the last time we were here was actually pre-designed, the top rolled numbers, where we had a project estimate of a little over $9 million. At that point in time, if you, if you roll it across to the right, you'll see that Resolution 4430 had bookends for the city's contribution, 1143, or on the high end, 7, 1715. Again, that resolution, as it was adopted, said, "Come back to us and talk again if, take, if they take the bids and the number exceeds that." Well, we then went to bid and actually got the project designed, and a year ago, we were ready to go to bid. The estimate was $10,161, and the numbers that the city, uh, city portion would have been 2.261. That exceeded your top max. Before we got to this point even, they told us not to go to bid. A year's passed, uh, the effects of inflation, probably more notably, the effects of the steel tariffs that went in place have now caused the adjustment to the, uh, pre-bid estimate. It is now, uh, $10,606. We follow that line across the bottom row of numbers. You can see that the MMU portion has gone from 900 to just under 1.6. The city's portion has gone to 2,9984, but that still exceeds the previous resolution's contemplated max by far right-hand side, 294,984. So we're back here this evening. We wanna talk to the council. Uh, we have been talking with your staff about the number. You can see that we went back and, working with our engineers, we asked, "Is that 900,000, should that go up?" And they gave us, uh, sound justification for having that number go up to just under 1.6. Uh, your staff, led by Bob, has reviewed that number, has come back and supports that number. So it's really the numbers that are driving the resolution this evening, and, uh, we wanted to, uh, come before you and have an opportunity to answer any questions you may have as we are now in that timeframe just before bidding. Now, when we bid, uh, we hope that the bid community is going to respond, and we have good bids. The estimate of 10.606, what do we know about that number? We know it's wrong. It's either wrong high or it's wrong low, but we never are that good in guess exactly. But, uh, what we're focusing on then in the new resolution are the percentages. If the number's lower, the contribution from the city is lower. If the number's higher, the number would be higher from the city. In the new resolution, we have put another, uh, come-back-and-talk-to-us number of 10 percent higher than that. And that's where that project is this evening.
Brad, would you want to, uh, very briefly just talk about that split and why there is the contribution that is appropriated to the water utility, raw water coming in that's being treated, and the contribution that is, uh, part of the wastewater, the used water going out of the system?
Well, uh, let's focus on the water part first. Our, our water is very hard. It comes in at, uh, 50 grains hardness. We lower it to 35 grains hardness and bring it to the water customer. That's our, have been our, uh, level of softness. Uh, with this project, we're gonna go from 35 grains down to 6 grains hardness. And FYI, I have talked, uh, in the last month to all three of the Marshall Water Softening Servicing businesses, and they understand the scope of the project, and, uh, to their credit, they all told me that they believe that, well, they're gonna be selling less salt. Obviously, that's what we want them to do. Uh, they believe their service business is gonna be maintained, and I, and I agree with that. I think that, uh, these, the softening, uh, that we have in our community, in our homes, in our business, a lot of us are gonna wanna have that soft water down to zero, just like my family likes. So I think that softening business is going to be able to continue. That's the water side of it. How do we get to the, the breakout here? Uh, that's just an expression of that number versus that number. Same thing here. That percentage is just that number versus that number. Now, if, after bidding, this number changes here, then obviously that number changes, 'cause the 7 million is fixed. It's 80 percent of whatever the costs are, and, and it doesn't, you can see it doesn't make quite 80 percent. So we've got, I'm pretty confident that number's fixed. But if the bids come in lower, uh, then this, this number will change, but the percentage would stay the same in both cases.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I was wondering where the 44.26 percent came in?
Well, it, really the question is, where does this number come in? Okay? It's just our engineers' calculation of what we would spend at MMU if we were going to make the improvements to our old equipment that need to be made to maintain that 36, 35-grain hard water, if we never had to attempt to lower it further. Uh, because we have to attempt to lower it further for the wastewater chloride limitation that rest of the project has to proceed.
One way or another, the, the city residents are gonna pay for this either through, uh, water or sewer charges then?
And as, as we know, in the, in the preliminary study that was done, the alternatives that were looked at were far more unfeasibly financially to do that. You'd have to do a reverse osmosis at wastewater plant, which would be incredibly expensive. So this partnership is the one that is the reasonable one and does allow the city to ultimately meet their discharge permit of the amount of salt that's being released into the river.
So this really just deals with the capital part of the project. Once the capital, the, the project is finished, we now are making a softer water, but it costs more to do that. So we are anticipating our rates are gonna go up for water. Now, we already have high-priced water. We know we do. It's difficult to make quality water in southwest Minnesota. This is gonna drive up our water cost further, and we're gonna do a water rate study this, uh, summer to determine what it's going to be. We're estimating that, and I have a frequently asked question, uh, handout that is included in your packets. We estimate it today at about a buck forty-four per thousand gallons more. Now, we also are estimating about, uh, the homeowner's gonna save about 92 cents per thousand on salt. So there's a net of 50-some cents per thousand to the homeowner for a better water. So as we think about how, as a community, can we attain reducing the salt that's going into the Redwood River by the amount that they want us to, it would be not possible without this step. Doing this, uh, will get us a long way there. I don't know that it's gonna get us all the way there, and I think probably Bob can do a better job talking to that than what I can.
Two questions here. One is, uh, what's the useful life of this one? Will it have to be replaced? The capital expenditures, and, and number two, would it have any effect on the, on the taste of the water? Residents know there's any taste difference?
I have Jeff Larson here, Water Operations Manager. Jeff, are you gonna make sure it tastes the same as it does now? Or better?
About the same.
On, on, tailing on that, um, I'm just a doctor, but I do know a little bit about chemistry. So we're switching salt for soda and lime, soda ash and lime. Are we jumping from the frying pan into the fire by alkal, now we got rid of the salt, but now we're alkalizing the Redwood River? Is that gonna cause a problem?
Coming, we need to adjust for alkalinity and coming along with the plant.
Yeah, yep.
Jeff, why don't you step up to the mic here?
And Bob, this might be actually your question, Dale.
The water plant is a giant chemistry project.
Yeah, I know.
Currently, right now, how we operate the plant is we have to adjust for alkalinity and pH are big too. We need to keep those about where they're at. You're concerned about the river, I'm concerned about water mains.
Right.
And complaints of rusty water and that sort of thing. So we'll be controlling the alkalinity and pH. It'll be similar to what it is now.
So how do, how do you do that, Jeff? How do you add, what do you, what acid do you add back to the system?
CO2 primarily.
Any other questions?
CO2 gets a good rap for once.
Yeah.
Bob, uh, if this doesn't get us all the way to 261 milligrams per liter, what's next?
We had that kind of built in when, uh, Bolton and Inc. did our original chloride study. The estimates from, from the engineers feel we will be under that 261 limit that we have. If not, we may have to go to a further step of, uh, potentially, uh, putting limits on industrial customers, try to get them with a set industrial user limit where they can do internally to, to keep us under. Uh, if, if that all fails, uh, we still may have to come back and, and, uh, do actually ban on ion exchange softeners if, if it comes down to that. I, I don't feel very confident that, that we'll need to do that. Ultimately, last step could be variance through the MPC and on the chloride limit, and, uh, that's basically a, a five-year, uh, waiting period to see if we can come up with better technology, affordable technology to reduce the chlorides, and, uh, then we would not be held to that 261 limit for that variance period.
John? Bob, is this where the, uh, the chloride surcharge comes in?
We, yes. Um, you know, not exactly sure how we'll be working that, but, uh, if, if certain industries cannot get down underneath that 261 limit, we, uh, could potentially put a surcharge on chlorides. Uh, we sample them. We're currently surcharging for excess phosphorus, BOD, TSS, flow, different things like that now. So if it comes to that, that, that would be an incentive for the industries to really try hard to get down under that limit, so.
So when it's in, in some of the documentation here, talking about it, it's primarily directed for commercial than not residential?
Yes, we're, we're feeling, the biggest source of our chlorides are the ion exchange softeners. A lot of the industrial water is not high in chlorides. It's, it's when they have to soften internally for boilers and different things like that, which, uh, would actually increase the chloride in their discharge. Yep.
Russ?
So Brad, just, uh, so in my own mind, the average homeowner, how much water do they use a month?
6,000 gallons a month.
And would cost them approximately how much more?
A buck forty-four per thousand.
Per thousand, so if they use six, so six, eight bucks a more, more a month?
The intent would be though, if they can turn their softeners down, they're not gonna be buying that almost a dollar's worth of salt.
Correct.
There is some offset there.
The gross would be eight bucks a month.
Yep. And along with less recharging of your softeners, you have less water use consumption, less wastewater discharge that they're paying for. So there's a couple other things that will offset that extra cost.
It's not a perfect offset, Russ. It is gonna cost. Steve, I don't think I fully answered your question about how long is this gonna last. It's gonna last as long as that plant lasts at that location, and Jeff, I think we're looking at 30 to 40 years more. But what happens, and we've now, as a community, we have collectively established a new standard for our water. There's a national standard, uh, for water quality. What, what's that called, Jeff? The Safe Drinking Water Act, uh, primary drinking water standards, and we meet those today. So what we're doing to make this softer exceeds the primary, uh, standard for hardness in the Safe Drinking Water Act. That's the new standard as a community we are going to attain with this project. I think once we attain that, that's something that we will always have to attain. There's not gonna be, we can't go back, uh, on that. So in 40 years, when Marshall needs to build another water treatment plant, um, I'm sure it's that standard that we'll be applying. And unless some other, uh, chemistry equation figures out how to make that same quality of water, we'll be making it with the same type of processes. That's what I guess.
Brad, just one other question. Pending these successful low bids coming in, what's the timeframe for construction?
Uh, we think, ideally, that they get the foundations in before freeze-up this year, and that, uh, by the early spring of 2021, uh, Jeff's having to figure out how to keep a taste in the same.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And just, just for clarification for the audience, these are driven by federal standards.
Right, right. The EPA says you have to limit our chlorides going into freshwater bodies, and, uh, we just stop and think about that a minute. Between 11 and 13,000 pounds a day of salt every day goes into the Redwood River, and, and has for a very long time. And so it makes sense. So we, we have to do something about this. And we are, uh, our community is a wet industry community largely. Uh, water is a very key ingredient to jobs, and, uh, it's always gonna be that way, more than likely. It always has been that way. Uh, so we have to do a good job with the water we produce. A few years ago, we got a great new quantity harvested from, uh, Yellow Medicine County. Uh, now it's time for us to take this step and make it a higher water quality.
So you have the resolution before you. That basically is the update of the resolution with the updated numbers. I would entertain a motion on that resolution.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote? Close the voting. The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Brad. Move then to the Agenda item number 22 to consider the approval of the Strategic Planning Services. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, at a past city council meeting, the council gave approval to send out a request for proposals. I did receive a number of proposals back. Unfortunately, most of them were, uh, more than anticipated cost than I originally thought. Uh, they were between 25 and 50,000, and, and, um, what I did is, I looked at all the requests for proposals and looked at one particular firm that had had somewhat of a local tie and had some familiarity with their work in Wilmer, and, uh, that would be the, um, request for, or the proposal that was in the pack at the Vantage Point Marketing Consultants, and, um, they did resubmit, um, their proposal and, uh, at a new cost. Let me add that, uh, to my knowledge, the city does not have, uh, anywhere located in their records a strategic plan, and this would be a listing of goals and action steps three to five years out. And what it does is it provides staff with, with, uh, direction from the council on a, on a more wide basis. And in turn, when the staff have pretty good direction from the council, we're able to do our work more efficiently and also meet the, um, requests of, of the council without trying to guess from one meeting to the next. So in a way, uh, the Strategic Planning Services proposal is somewhat of a, a pent-up, uh, demand here. If, if there was an existing strategic plan in place, uh, we could look at simply updating that and, and, you know, possibly, uh, using internal staff to update that. But since this has never been done, I highly recommend, uh, the use of a facilitator so that we're inclusive of all the staff, uh, and we're able to get a good plan in place. One of the other discussion items that we had was inclusion with the other boards and commissions, and this was a suggestion by the mayor that we would like to get some feedback from them as well. So this would include, uh, Community Services Board, Economic Development Board, and I'm missing the others, but, um, try to include them in this as well. The fiscal impact is 17,500, which was more than, again, than I anticipated. However, um, we have worked with our existing budget and did a review, and, and we think that if we can spread this across various departmental budgets, we can fit it in with the 2019 budget, and we wouldn't have to use reserves or, or, uh, do a, do a levy increase to pay for it. Let me just say that, again, I think I mentioned this earlier, I've done strategic plan development and facilitation. And so it look, it's, it's a lot harder than it looks, and, uh, there's a lot of prep and demand, and, uh, prep that's required is part of the strategic plan that you may not see, um, because it happens outside the actual meetings that we have. So I think this is a fair price for what we're asking, considering that we do not have one in place at this, at this point. Uh, my request for the council is to approve the Strategic Plan Services with Vantage Point Marketing Consultants.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. We'll open it up for, uh, any questions? We'll open it up for any questions.
I move approval.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
Just one question. Is this a possibility, Sharon, that this has to be done this year? Could we put it in the budget for next year and do it next year?
I really would like to see it done this year. And one of the reasons is we have a comprehensive plan that needs updating as well. That's a 1996 document, relates to how we want a city, see the city grow. And we also know that some aspects of our zoning is not up to date. And I think that the strategic plan is really a good platform for that particular process. And you would think maybe it's similar, and there is some similar planning processes, but they're really two separate, two separate processes, and I'd like to see this get in place.
So would this go forth before the comprehensive, this WBA review of the comprehensive plan, or do they go side by side?
We could do it side by side, and, but the timing and discussions with staff, it looks like we won't get to the comprehensive plan until maybe later this year or early next year. That particular process, we would also do a request for proposals and hire a consultant who's familiar with updating comprehensive plans to get us to where we need to be. So I think this is a really good first step prior to the comprehensive plan update. And I actually wanted to do it last year, and I just didn't get to it. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not opposed to doing it. I just, you know, being new to the council, we're probably going to be entering budget discussion shortly, and I'm just looking at a timeframe. Are we better off doing it next year, because you feel we should do it this year? That's fine.
Other discussion and motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Gen I number, Gen I number 23 considers the approval of consumption and display license for Southwest Minnesota State University. Any questions on this? If not, is there a?
Motion to approve.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Move then to council member, board liaison reports, actually, I'll start. The Regional Development Commission is scheduled to have their rescheduled meeting this coming Thursday. They have canceled that because of the weather forecast. The Fire Relief Association will have their quarterly meeting next Tuesday. Jim? Or Craig?
People do that to us all the time.
I would consider it a privilege because.
Back to you. Mr. Mayor, I have none. I might have not.
And Steve?
Nothing.
Glenn?
Housing Commission met yesterday, and all is well with the Housing Commission. We have good attendance at our meeting, and everything seems to be operating well. Planning Commission meets tomorrow.
John? Mine did not meet. Was able to attend the meeting with the Attorney General and Broadmore Valley. So intention of that, probably looking at sometime later on, scheduling a conference call just to get some ideas of what the Attorney General felt out of the meeting. So. Thank you, John, for attending that. Russ?
Library Board met yesterday, and I want to thank Annette and Carl and Sharon and whoever else that got together with them to settle up that 2018 final number. But that final budget will be presented to, the report, I should say, excuse me, it's council, at a later date. They also published their second annual newsletter, or calendar of events, which I thought was very well done, and they're able to get that out. So National Library Week is this week accordingly, and so they'll be celebrating with that pending the snow. Police Advisory met, and I believe they conducted oral interviews for the captains' positions, and they established an eligibility roster that took effect on April 8. And CDD will meet next week.
Jim?
Mine did not meet.
Move then to council member individual items. Jim, we'll start with you.
I do want to clarify something, something I said earlier. 90% of the citizens did react correctly, Glenn. I will agree with that. There was 10% who did, I believe, go overboard. And I have visited with Mr. Trachterberg about it. They had contacted his banker. They had pestered his pet store, his retail business there. They had gone above and beyond normal research, and that affects other businesses looking at coming to Marshall. And that's what worries me, is if we can't sit down and have a discussion about what's going on, a cordial discussion with facts, not falsehoods, we're going to have trouble attracting businesses to Marshall, period. You know, it worries me that Ralco is watching how this goes down. The new owners of Schwanz are watching how this goes down. Other potential businesses are watching this. And I have no problem with cordial discussions. I think that's great. You bring the facts to me, I'll sit and talk with you all day long. You'll even sway me. When people come with non-factual information on, you know, blood running down the streets, that is, that's what I meant by mob mentality. I want to clarify that to the public out there. Like I said, 90% of the people were very cordial. But as you know, we got some pretty nasty, I don't want to say nasty, but unfactual emails. And I just, I'd like to sit and discuss stuff over this about the facts. We do have several businesses in Marshall that do exactly what this guy was doing. You know, Walnut Grove Mercantile, wonderful business, B3 district. He manufactures, ships to all 50 states. So we have examples of that. Braw Brothers, 80% of their business is manufacturing, B3 district. We need to look at these options because we need the jobs in Marshall. The greatest way to increase your property value is increase your citizens, increase your population, increase your business growth. And as I visit, and I know I'll visit with many disappointed business owners tomorrow, that they're worried about the business climate in Marshall attracting new businesses in the town. And we need to take a look at these box stores, we have a second one open up. We've been fortunate to fill ours so far, but now we have two of them sitting empty. And with the changing landscape, who knows what will happen with the rest of them? You know, Amazon is a big beast out there that is affecting these stores. So we need to be proactive in Southwest Minnesota. And we have a business knocking on our door, we need to have factual, cordial discussions about it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to make some comments about economic development later.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would probably echo some of the same comments that Mr. Lozinski made. And, you know, I think we all took an oath of office when we accepted this position to represent or to honor the Constitution of the state of Minnesota and to represent our constituents to the best of our ability. At times, we're not going to be able to please all of our constituents. And, you know, again, I agree with Jim. We had, like all of us, we had some emails that I think were way off the cuff and some that were right on. But again, that could be part of our own fault with the comprehensive plan being so outdated. And that's why I asked Sharon earlier, you know, maybe that's a focus we need to put to update that comprehensive plan. So, you know, it's unfortunate. I feel bad that Mr. Trachterberg has felt this way and pulled, and Mr. Carr pulled the conditional use permit application. But again, we also have to be receptive to the people that elect us and represent them to the best of our ability. Is it right? Is it wrong? You know, I mean, I struggled with making a decision for that tonight. And I'm, you know, I'm not happy that we don't have to make a decision, but it's unfortunate. It really is. That's all I have.
John? I guess I may as well continue on with this, too. I guess it's, I do think it's unfortunate that we lost a business that was going to bring in about $100,000 a month into payroll, 25 to 30 people that would be employed, losing about 50 people that are going to be unemployed when Shopko closes up. I do think, you know, part of this discussion was what, how do you define manufacturing? And I think manufacturing can be defined in a lot of ways. I would say this would have been a business that was listed as a B3 potential in that area. It still is. If somebody wanted to open a meat market, which is bringing in meat, slicing it up, whether they dehydrate it, or they smoke it, or whatever, whether it's for human consumption or whether it's for some other animal consumption, that is a permitted use in a B3 area. And I do think it would have been a good business to put in there. So that's about it. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I go down that road, I want to say that Mark Lath and I had the great privilege of meeting with an individual from, who currently resides in California, who actually lost an uncle in the first plane that flew into the towers on 9/11. And this young man is a computer software engineer out in California, that his passion hobby is photography and filmmaking and storytelling. And his current project, or his desire, is to document memorials and tributes to 9/11. And so Mark and I got to spend some time with him, talking about the history of how we got to Memorial Park and the great place we have there and kind of the future of that. So I was very honored to spend some time with him. And as you guys all know, I'm really proud of the fact that I was able to have involvement in that. So that said, now I want to go back on to the.
With that, I think, you know, we all want to recognize that, you know, you certainly have provided a legacy with your involvement there. So thank you. I wanted to get that in before you get to the next.
Thank you, God. God gave me a very nice gift and blessed me with being able to be at the right place at the right time and hopefully left something positive. And that said, I want to echo what my esteemed colleagues have already said, that I understand the constituents' concerns, and I also respect the fact that they come forward. Everyone that talked to me was very respectful, and we had a very respectful dialogue. However, I do know that that wasn't the case with all of the people that went forward. And I understand emotion. This isn't the first public elected seat that I've held, and it's not the first controversy that I've dealt with, that a very vocal constituency felt that I was on the wrong side. And I really struggle and try to hold myself to task to understand that when I filed for the, when I filed for school board in 2000, or 1985, I had an axe to grind. And I ran on that axe my first term. And then I ran for a second term and was reelected and didn't have an axe to grind, but had the interest of that body in mind. And I felt good about my second term. I was a little bit embarrassed about my first term, but we got the work done that needed to get done. When I ran for city council in Marshall, I ran for city council because I wanted to serve Marshall. And that's my constituents in Ward 3, but it's the entire city of Marshall, and that's what I wanted to serve, is Marshall. I try to make my decisions based on what's right and wrong for Marshall, and what's in our ordinance and what's in our policies, and then what is in the best interest of Marshall. And I know that sometimes the varied interests and concerns of individual residents can get in the way, and those need to be weighed in. But by the bottom line is, is I'm not going to make my decisions based on emotion or a threat of an election. I'm going to make it based on what I think is right for Marshall, and I'm going to do my best to research that. Sometimes when you weigh the pros and cons and want to use a legal term, although I'm not an attorney, okay, but I understand the preponderance, and it's tipping that balance. And if I can't make a decision, then it's absolutely the voice of my constituents that's going to tip that. But by the bottom line is, is that I didn't get elected here to be a sounding board by first and foremost. I got elected here, I believe, to do the job that isn't always easy to do, and to spend that extra work and time to try to get the facts and do the background and do what I believe is right for Marshall. And in that, that is why I said what I said. I'm not trying to attack any individual constituents. I respect their ability, and I always welcome that comment. And I want to say that the people that I conversed with over this were very respectful. We didn't agree on everything, but they told me what they thought and why, and I did the same thing, and it was very respectful, and I appreciate that. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
I can't overrun anything else that's been said, so I defer.
And Glenn? Are you going to defer, too?
No, I won't defer. I need to bring some balance to this council. And a lot of times I feel like that's my role, is to bring balance and other opinions, because I think it's important to hear other opinions, not just one side of an issue. I don't condone improper behavior, but I think we need to realize that there was improper behavior on both sides of the issue. And I think some people are trying to paint it like this one side was bad and doing improper things, and the other side was all good. It goes both ways. And we should not condone improper behavior on either side of the issue. And so it was not a one-sided thing. And the vast majority of the people that were concerned about this issue acted properly. And when I look at the emails I received, they were well-written, respectful, generally they were that way. There was one derogatory towards me by somebody that was against it, but that person has a right to write those things. And I mean, that's part of the price we pay for being on the city council. And maybe I didn't feel that was fair, but that person had the right to do that. And I, like I said, we had concerned citizens who were trying to do the right thing, and they were passionate about what they believed in. And they were trying to stand up for what they believed in. So I don't think you can sit there and paint this one side as being bad and the other side good. And I think all of it, most of the people that were against the approval of the conditional use permit are for economic development. We all want jobs in Marshall. We all want economic development. But as I said before, we want it done in a fair and a legal manner. And I am convinced that what we were going to, what the council might have done tonight if they approved it was not legal. I'm convinced, and it's not just my opinion, it's other people's opinions, too. And so we can differ on that, but to me, it all boiled down to, is it legal or not legal? And that's how the decision should have been made. And like I said, we're all for economic development, but we're not for economic development, no matter what the cost. I mean, we're here talking about pollution tonight, and how we have to improve the quality of our water going into the Redwood River. I mean, we have to get concerned about those things, too. It's not just economic development. Business people can do whatever they want at any cost. We have laws, and the laws are to be obeyed by all people, and especially the city council and government. Government is responsible for obeying the laws. We wrote the law. We should obey the law. And as I read it, again, what they were proposing should not have been allowed in a B3 business district. And like I said, I applaud the people that were concerned, that came to the meetings and expressed their concerns. And overall, I think they did it respectfully, and most of them were informed in what they were saying. And like I say, it's a two-way street here. And like I say, I think some people are overly critical of the people that were opposed to this. Like somehow they're opposed to economic development, and they're improper in their behavior. And I don't think generally that's the case.
So let me make just a few comments as part of the open session. And that being, we had a request that was, that never did come to us. It never did come for consideration because the owner of the business that was intending to purchase the property shortly before this meeting informed that property owner that was going to sell it, that he wasn't going to. And he outlined in that, that based on his perception of the reception that he was going to receive in Marshall, he made that business decision. And that's a decision that is his right to make. I think it's our issue, well, to address that perception. So earlier this evening, we talked about strategic planning that this council needs to seriously consider, and also involving our working commissions. And I think that's an important step. And yesterday, Sharon Hanson, city administrator, and I, and our economic development coordinator, and a county commissioner, and the county administrator, and one other administrator from another community in Lyon County, met in Wilmer with the leadership of their Economic Development Commission, which is a joint effort between the county and the city that has been about a decade in planning, but it's highly successful. That's a strategy that I think we need to investigate more, because clearly what we're doing now has not demonstrated success in terms of what we saw this evening. We did not demonstrate that the community is open and welcome for business. So with, you know, I think moving forward, you know, we have to take a look at how we do economic development. We have to take a look at how we structure our economic development efforts. We have to take a look at what incentives are possible in this community. And we have to take a look at what we need to create jobs, because this is a community that has always been about job creation and jobs in this community. We're not a community that is, that has lakes and is. We're not a community that is, uh, that has lakes and is a, uh, has some of the other natural amenities, but we are a community that does have a strong work ethic and has been a place where business and industry can be successful, and we need to be sure that that continues. So that's the challenge that we have before us with our strategic plan, as well as, uh, kind of our efforts to look at how are we organized and fund economic development efforts. With that, I'll turn to the next agenda item, which is our staff reports, and start with you, Sharon.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, I wasn't gonna comment on the, on the CUP, but I do want to add one thing, and this is mostly because I, I noticed that the newspaper had the, the legal opinion from the, um, from some of the residents. And today, the staff did a lot of research on the legal implications of the CUP. And as you are aware, staff recommended the CUP. They believed it met ordinance. Uh, the city council did appoint a city attorney. And, uh, that is the legal opinion that matters. We did seek out outside counsel, and, uh, that outside counsel did, uh, work with the city attorney as well. So I just wanted to mention this, it, just, uh, because I know that the newspaper has the, the other legal opinion. And I don't want to speak for Dennis, but, um, just based on our discussions today, the city attorney's legal opinion is that the CUP was legal, and we were meeting the ordinance if the council approved CUP. And I'll defer to Dennis if you wanted to add to that. Switching gears, um, Alex Peterson did it for me here tonight, that the, uh, the Weather Channel's gonna be in Marshall for the weather event. So if anybody wants to be out in the elements for the next three days, they, they might want to interview you. So weather this storm, maybe you can weather the storm over the next three days.
Mr. Mayor?
And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, on, on that, Mr. Taylor, when you dig back into the back corner of your Office of Treasures, do you have a Taylor lumber yardstick that goes to at least three feet?
Uh, we've got the yardstick. I don't know long enough.
That's a yard, then, right? Thirty-six inches? Okay.
Fifty-fourty-two or-
Okay. Does it say Taylor lumber on it?
It might say J.F. Taylor.
Okay. Can we get that down so the Weather Channel can use that to measure the snowfall at the given site? I think that would be very appropriate. Could you get that to City Hall?
I'll try to remember.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Greg, did you want to say something?
Before you change, I'd like to comment on, uh, the issue that bypassed this today this evening.
Greg, can you come up to the mic, though? I, I'll recognize you, Greg. You can come, but because we're on broadcast, so-
We're gonna change topics.
Well, we're gonna change over to Glenn next, so.
I'm only, Council and Mayor, I'm only hearing people, staff, uh, as a lifelong resident. I wasn't at any of the other meetings. I didn't hear any of the arguing or ill will. I didn't enter into any emails or see any. But I'm worried about Marshall. And, uh, for the first time in my life, the last time I checked the population, it had gone down for the first time in my life. And I believe it was probably, uh, twenty sixteen, I got it from the state. But it was only two or two-hundred-and-sixty-some people or whatever, but it was in reverse. That has never happened in my life. So because of this, um, these, this empty building scenario that we have, many of, uh, Wilmer Poultry and the old Marshall Ford, on and on and on, I, uh, took it upon myself, uh, being very, very familiar with the Boston area, and Hudson, New Hampshire is like a seven-ring suburb. It's forty-five minutes from downtown Boston. I had some ideas as to why they might want to be moving. Uh, so I checked. I called eight or ten different entities in Hudson, New Hampshire. And, uh, my suspicion was, uh, they're closer to their food that they use, grains and beef and everything. We have everything here but rice. And if you're a dog guy like I am, and you look through all the dog brands, there's all kinds of stuff, chicken, lamb, on and on and on. And then they call Massachusetts, my wife's family's from there, we go there frequently, Taxachusetts. I'm sure that had something to do with it also in my mind. And then labor costs. If they paid fifteen dollars an hour here, they would be cutting their labor in half. Okay, so I called a nursing home, uh, I just called a nursing home and happened to talk to the, uh, maintenance head guy. And I called the, the, these people, this, uh, Chasing Tails people, they share a building with another outfit that is, uh, uh, um, fire protection outfit. They, the Chasing Tails people wanted to expand, but there's no room for them to expand. And I talked to a fire captain, and I talked to, uh, a realtor, and I talked to, uh, assistant principal of a school, and on and on. Now, the guy that's maintenance guy was kitty-corner across the street in, oh, that, in a nursing home guy. This is a maintenance guy at a nursing home. And he didn't even know they made dog food there. I said, how long have you worked at the nursing home? Seventeen years. Well, they had fewer semis going in and out of there than County Market had. And of course, they didn't have a hundred cars in the parking lot, either, for the traffic and the safety of the kids and on and on. And I didn't talk to the owner, this gentleman that's disappointed, I, I don't, I didn't talk to that guy. I just called the community. I called a realtor and people in the neighborhood. I, I called the North Something Grill and talked to the manager. It's like the Wooden Nickel or something like that, or Velocasina or whatever. And, oh yeah, their lots always clean, and they take good care of the place. Well, the, the, the best response that I got, or the one that means the most, was the fire captain, who's also the health officer, and he also monitors the water into the river. And I called, there's another one, I called the wastewater treatment plant. Zero problems. They had all the, they had all the permits, never had a problem. The fire guy goes through there and checks, no trash, no nothing, clean place. Twenty-five to thirty jobs minimum. That's like the corn, the corn plant started. I went to every meeting. They were gonna have seventy-five. They've said, don't plant any more than seventy-five. Well, maybe some of you know how many are employed out there, but I'll bet it's a hundred and seventy-five. And they'd be cutting their, at fifteen bucks or more, they'd be cutting their expense by forty percent. So there'd be, I heard John or somebody, one of you people had the numbers on their wages. Well, we can't stand much more of this, or we're gonna get left behind in the shuffle. And that's the facts of life. Now, we have to follow the law, I agree. But one of the comments here was the interpretation of manufacturing. All the products come in there, they roast or dehydrate, they, they smoke or roast the already dehydrated meat, and they put the grains together, dry it up. They, uh, put it into the same kernels that any of you people have dogs that you put in their dish. They package it and ship it out. I guess you could call it manufacturing. I would call it packaging. And I think we missed the boat. And we need eight more businesses like this. Instead of counting on the big people, like the corn planter Schwan's, we need eight more businesses exactly like this one. Or we're gonna keep going in reverse. And if you think you got a budget problem now, you wait till all these people ask for reassessment of their taxes, and these buildings sit empty, and there's several of them that are way behind in their tax payments now. I think you're at the tip of the iceberg. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. We appreciate your input. Sharon, do you have anything more as far as staffing? Glenn?
Just a couple of things. We're anticipating a fairly severe snowfall.
Really? What? Where did that happen?
If Greg's, um, yardstick could measure horizontally, I guess that's-
I'll dig it out.
It sounds like it's gonna be windy. So just for process, we are, we sent a kind of a notice to the public today that we will be working, uh, Thursday, Friday, maybe Saturday, depending upon how things go. And it really all depends upon what comes, when, and how. So it, it's really, you know, it's not a set schedule or set method, but, uh, we're going to continue to do snow removal, so, uh, we're not gonna wait until the end and then put a three-foot snowbank in your driveway. We're going to do it smaller amounts three times, probably. So just be kind of aware of that. Uh, we'll do the best we can with it. And if there is a weather person coming in, I know the mayor has always been good to give, uh, whether it's two o'clock in the morning or whatever.
And we're getting you a fresh stick.
The, uh, Glenn, we may want to make a comment on the, um, the other thing that you may want to comment on, the, we're monitoring the river. We do expect some, some, you know, yard issues because the predictions are for two inches of rain plus snow, so.
And, and the issue there is, uh, you know, it's gonna be so windy, you may have significant drifting. And in backyards are probably something to watch quite a bit. The, the sump pumps have been noticed, noticed to discharge to the yard or to the street. We want to make sure that that continues. Anyone who does have sanitary sewer discharges, please disconnect them or shut them off. Uh, discharge to the yard or, or to the street. That's, that's really important for wastewater. We, uh, had, uh, more than four times the regular flow coming to the, to the wastewater plant over the course of the last, um, event, so, uh, it, it's really a significant item. That's all I have.
Thank you, Glenn.
Glenn? I noticed there was a press release put out about parking. Can you just touch on that, Greg?
Yes, okay, I'll touch on that.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the emergency, um, declaration that we're able to do for snow removal, according to our ordinance, to be legal, it goes out of effect on, on, on April first. So we can't designate that. We also have a lot of snow routes that are signed and designated for the same dates, November to April. Uh, even though that it, we aren't, aren't gonna take it in to-do's, we're requesting everybody to, to follow the winter parking regulations during this snow event. And, uh, usually that helps out a lot, because cars parked on the street are two things. It doesn't allow us to do our job properly. Number, number two, it, in heavy snow, it plows you in, and you get plowed in solid, and there's no fun getting, shoveling out of that. So if you can move before the snow comes, please move them off the street.
Can I add one suggestion to that? And if we do happen to get thirty inches of snow and wind, to help our plow drivers, put a flag on top of your car if it's buried in snow. And I've seen that happen, so they don't accidentally hit your car.
Should it be an Iowa state flag?
I don't care what kind of flag.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, uh, as everybody else has said, considerable time, considerable staff time has been spent on the, uh, conditional use permit. Glenn, I would disagree with you. I do believe that we were complying with ordinance with statutes, and courts do grant municipalities great deference on the decisions related to zoning issues as made by councils, as long as they're not arbitrary and capricious. And I believe that we were following our ordinance and following state law in bringing this matter forward and supporting staff's decision to believing that it is within our ordinance rights, so.
Well, here's an attorney that disagrees with you.
But that's my job is about, Glenn. We all agree on everything. I believe we're following our ordinance.
And I believe we weren't.
And Dennis, I appreciate you being the city attorney, giving us advice as a council. I look at you to give us advice as our paid city attorney.
And as Sharon said, you are our attorney as city council. We'll move on, on then to, um, uh, the other agenda items that remain are the administrative reports, and I think Sharon, you sent a supplemental one for yours. You have the information items, including the building permits, the listing of upcoming meetings. If there's nothing else to come forward this evening, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close voting. Motion passes. We're adjourned.